Kind of forget that these are actually people. Like, people die.
Mm-hmm.
Like, three a day. But that gets lost. And I think that that's the one thing that APB, I think, really does. Is it shows that these are people. You know, there are a lot of women who contributed to APB.
Oh, yeah.
There's like a ve- a lot of stories about, this is what it's like raising a child, having to tell them, male or female, that you may one day die. Or that you have to be careful.
Don't, don't wear that because...
Right, and you have to tell your, 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 your son, and I have to tell my daughter. You know, and these are very painful things when you think about it, you know? Like, most people don't think about it, like, you know, I have a daughter, she's eight. But one day I have to tell her that if she's in trouble, she might not want to go to the police.
Yeah.
Because she might be in more trouble.
Yeah.
And for, for a democracy, I mean, if you really want to think about that, where we have whole populations of people, where parents have to tell their children, "Don't go to the police if you're ever in trouble."
Yeah.
And it's serve and protect.
And it was that one essay that was, you mentioned the woman writing it, that was just about her picking her kids up-
Yes.
-at the mall.
Yes.
And it's not that anything happens in it, but it was what she thought and what she looked for in just going into the mall and picking her kids up and seeing a police car in the parking lot.
APB is one of those things where, that made me have to apologize to my mom. Sorry I had you worrying like that, I had no clue. You know, but it, but it's true.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm very proud of that.
You should be.
I'm very proud of everything that we do, but I'm, I'm very proud of that. Because nobody else seemed to step up to do that.
Yeah.
Which might be why we're here.
Yeah.
Rosarium, that is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, let's talk about one of the other anthologies before we move into talking about some comics.
Okay, okay.
And that's The Sea is Ours. Fascinating idea for an anthology.
Yes.
It's steampunk.
Yes.
We were talking about this earlier. And it's, and it's Asian steampunk, it's not just Asian.
It's Southeast.
It's Southeast Asian steampunk.
Right.
Kind of non-colonial.
Yes. Oh, anti-colonial.
Anti-colonial, yeah.
Well, it's really funny, because Jamie, Jamie Go was in Mothership.
Yeah.
And I was already familiar with Joyce's, Joyce Cheung's work. Because of Mothership, she was one of the authors that, like, I read when I was looking for authors. And I, and I really liked that, both of them. And one day they were on Twitter talking about representation, or complaining about lack of representation, and how steampunk from people of color is often shunned by editors and publishers. So while I was reading it, I was like, hey, guys, why don't we do something? This was, you know, in those headier days of beginning publishing, when the realities of publishing don't smack you around for a while. And they said yes. Uh, so that's pretty much how that was born. I was like, give me an idea, let's, let's bat it around and let's see, see what we can come up with. And that's what they came up with. And I said, well, nobody's done that one, I don't think, so let's try it. Unfortunately, it came out as well as it did.
Yeah, it's just a great idea.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, why, why does steampunk have to be in, you know, have to have Victorian trappings?
Don't look at me.
Yeah.
I don't really think that, uh, I look upon the Victorian era as anything romantic, either as an African-American or as half-Jamaican. I don't really look at...
I wonder why.
I don't look fondly upon the Victorian era at all, so I don't know why. That, that, that's for you to tell me.
Now, there's one, before we talk about comics, there's one other book I want to ask about, and that's Making Wolf.
Making Wolf.
Because your stuff is usually genre. It's usually fantasy, science fiction, something in, you know, that kind of genre. But this is a crime thriller. Now, you've done this before.
Yeah.
Because you, you republished The Jones Boys.
The Jones Men.
The Jones, yeah.
By Vern Smith, yeah.
Yeah, amazing book.
Yes, it is. Crime is another one of those genres that, that, one, it says a lot about the, the social norms and mores of, of your society. I mean, crime is like one of those commentaries on that. And what's acceptable and what's not unacceptable behavior and deviance and all these things that are very interesting themes for me. Because in so many ways, things that, people or writers or, or leaders that I've always admired at one time were considered deviant. So crime, in a way, is just a very interesting play on these things. So Tade also was in Mothership. And I thought that crime also could use more multicultural flavor as well. So when I read it, I, it was, it was incredibly different. It was incredibly different, which is, for me, I guess, being a DC boy now, you know, Pelikanos is my favorite crime writer. Because it's not really about the crime, it's about all these other things. And that, and I find that fascinating. And Making Wolf is a lot like that. It is about the crime, but it's more about the place where he is.
Which is West Africa.
It was, it's a fictional West African country. Uh, so, yeah, I was just totally captivated by it. I mean, anybody who's been an editor, who's read slush, can tell you, it's just like, a lot of times you just read until you stop being interested. Sometimes that's the first paragraph, but very rarely is it to the end of the book. If I am sitting there and going like, oh, wow, this book just ended? Then those are the things that I want to publish, right? And Tade's was just, I was just like, wow, okay. Because, I mean, especially when we talk about Africa, they're very staid and static images and, you know, as I said, if I see another white person enter Africa and a bunch of dancing Africans around them, like, I will lose my mind. But in every movie, this happens, there's like dancing Africans. And there were no dancing Africans in this. So I was like, okay, this, this works for me. Okay, it's a bit more complicated than that, but... But no, Tade is a, is a wonderful writer. And he's mostly a science fiction writer, but this, Making Wolf blew me away.
Cool.
So I had to, I had to publish it.
Well, let, let's start talking about some of your comics.
Okay.
Because I think probably most of what you published are comics.
Um...
Though that's been changing some.
I think it's leading... It's hard to say. Because comics are so, such a long process. That, I think we have more comics projects, but we haven't necessarily published more comics yet. But tha- that is tilting a little bit more that way. And hopefully one day we'll be able to find some sort of balance in that.
And you're a comics guy yourself, right?
Uh...
Well, you used to draw, you used to draw.
I used to draw when I was a kid. I'm kind of thinking of myself more of a sadist.
Yeah.
Who likes science fiction and comics.
Yeah, looking, looking back at your books, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, my comics was my, one of my first loves.
Yeah. And while we speak, just recently, the fifth issue of Day Black-
Yes.
-came out, which-
Yes.
I love, I'm a huge Day Black fan.
Well, you should wait till you see number six.
Oh, yeah, it's heading...
Yes, it's...
That's just, it's a, it's a brilliant comic, Keith Cross.
Keith Cross, yes. He's a tattoo artist out of Atlanta and...
Oh, that explains a lot.
So basically, you're, you're basically looking at his tattoo style when you're,
Mm-hmm.
when you're, when you're reading Day Black.
Yeah.
And then his sense of humor is all his own.
Yeah, and just for people that don't know, it's, it's about a vampire-
Tattoo artist.
A, a black vampire tattoo artist who was, became a vampire when he was a slave.
Yes.
And is a tattoo artist because there's bleeding when you're a tattoo artist, and it's a way for him to get blood.
Yeah, he's trying to live incognito, so he, instead of killing people all the time, he draws their blood in the tat- while tattooing with his tattoo gun.
And the story gets, you know, there's family involved and his past involved, and you see, you know, back, you know, when he was turned. It's, it's really a powerful story, and it's just a trip to read.
Oh, I love it.
And his drawing style is like nothing else I've seen.
Well, it's hard finding unique projects.
Yeah.
It's really, it really is difficult. And Day Black is really, I mean, it's an incredibly unique thing. Like, Keith Cross is the only person who could ever tell that story.
Yeah.
And it's a wonderful story, and, you know, he's incredibly talented. It's, it's beautiful art.
Yeah.
And so how could you resist it?
It's, it's a unique, it's a unique story, it's a unique look. Uh, we talked about Kid Code a little bit.
Right.
And, because that's, uh, who's that, they, yeah, that's John, and it's Stacy Robinson-
And Damien Duffy.
Damien Duffy.
Yes.
And that just went everywhere. I mean, that, that book was just, you didn't know what the hell was gonna happen.
Yes, I can't wait for number two.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm curious too. Like, that's, that's one of the funny things, like, I see it before everybody else, but I'm kind of wondering too what's getting ready to happen in, in all these different things.
I mean, I was trying to think of how I would describe the story. You described it as hip-hop Doctor Who.
Right.
But it's...
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. We could spend a half hour talking about...
Yeah, it's a dense book. There's like a lot of stuff in it.
Yes.
You know, a really dense story, a dense world.
Yes, it's almost, it's a, um, but an idea every three, three panels.
Yeah. And it's great world-building in it.
Yes.
It really is.
It could go on for a while, but I think it's only gonna be three issues.
Ah, okay.
If I remember correctly.
Okay, I gotta keep my eyes open.
Yes.
And Blue Hand Mojo.
Well, that's, uh, John Jennings again.
I haven't read Blue Hand Mojo.
Well, it's a hoodoo noir, is what we're calling it. Set in 1930 Chicago. It's a private detective selling his soul to the devil.
That's my wheelhouse.
Of course, Big Bill ruins me.
Yeah.
Uh, but, um, it's a private detective who sold his soul to the devil, and he's trying to get his soul back.
That's great.
Yes. Well, you know, we try to do all these weird kind of things that you just generally don't see. That's, that's our reason for existing.
Yeah.
Is to give people things that they haven't really seen.
Yep, yep, and you do that, you do that.
I try.
I have to grab Blue Hand Mojo when I get home.
Yes. Well, you know, that was the thing, right? You might not like it, or you might love it, but as long as you don't forget it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and you don't, you don't with your stuff. And you've got more stuff coming out.
Yes, we, we've, we've worked really hard trying to build, trying to build a family.
And, and while we're, while we're speaking, you've got an Indiegogo campaign going to, to kind of help move you to another level.
Yes.
And you've got a lot of stuff going on. You're a busy man, and you've been on the road.
If you're gonna be a bear, be a grizzly.
There you go. Uh, Bill, we have run out of time.
Okay.
I just want to let you know, it's a pleasure having you here.
Great to be here.
And I'm hoping to see things coming from Rosarium for a long time.
Thank you.
And we'll have you back on.
All right, I'll be here.
All right.
All right.
Well, that's it for Fast Forward. So from all of us here at the studio, this is Mike Zipser saying, take care.
I haven't made my decision, I haven't really had a chance to think about how I feel about that, but it's really outside the bounds, especially given since that the lines were put in seemingly outside the town bylaws or the town committee or the traffic calming guidelines. What was a $500 mistake is very different when it's an $18,000 to $30,000 mistake. And it doesn't even take into account the impact on property values. So I'm very upset about the situation, I want to make sure it's clear to you all that I'm very upset about it. And I really think the board should look into accountability about the situation. It wasn't done the right way, there's a serious problem here, and this is just incredibly problematic. There is a violation of the public trust with this decision either way now at this point in time. I don't know what the right thing to do is, but I know this feels very, very wrong. And I think other people do as well. So I would hope maybe that the board will look into this further investigation, how a small group of people can award contracts of this nature that have this type of impact on not just the people in my neighborhood, but the people all across the town. It's incredibly frustrating, and I will thank you for looking into this further.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Like with anybody online?
Yes, we do.
Go ahead, Antoinette.
Hi, I'm Antoinette Monjillo at 44 Farmington. I just want to reiterate what Ben said, and just to confirm he's not alone in the feelings that he just expressed, there's a lot of us that are still very frustrated. That's it.
Hi, this is Jacqueline Nyman, I'm a resident at 61 Ellington Street. And I just wanted to, I echo everything that Ben said when I just saw the quote just a few minutes ago, it seems astronomical, given the cost that it was to paint the lines. And I think we decided at the last meeting that just painting over the lines is not a suitable solution, because as Lynn rightly noted, that when the clouds come in winter, it will scrape the paint off, and that's just going to create a permanent maintenance thing that needs to happen. However, it seems like this process of getting the lines removed is taking a lot longer than we had anticipated, and longer than I think it took on Greenwood, on Greenacre. So if that is the case, and we are unable to expedite this process, painting over the lines in black is a good temporary measure. We already have the contractor on Farmington who was going to paint yellow lines on Farmington, we can just, I assume, switch that over to have them paint black ones on Ellington, at least until a more permanent solution, you know, you get the quotes, and we figure out what the best way to move forward is. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Allison, you can speak. Unmute yourself, actually. Mike, you can just ask to unmute, that's it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did.
Yeah. She was going to speak. She had her hand up. Oh, there we go. Can you hear us, Allison? All right, we'll give you another few seconds, Allison, it looks like you connected, but you're still on mute. Just type in the chat if you're trying to speak, Allison. No. Okay. All right, Alex, go ahead.
Good afternoon everyone, Alex Metreski, 68, Ellington Street. I just, you had received my email two weeks ago, so you kind of understand where I stand in this situation. And just looking at the bits now for trying to correct this issue, it just dawned on me something that I thought was a little bit disappointing is, as I recall, the lines were painted Thursday night, and only the main, the yellow lines in the middle of the road were painted on a Thursday night. And so when I woke up Friday morning, saw the lines obviously frustrated, and a lot of the neighbors as well, so we reached out to the DPW. And I called multiple times that morning, was on hold, left a message to get called back, and then I sent an email expressing my displeasure and saying, hey, this didn't work for Greenwood. Why are you guys doing this? It's not going to work, it's making the situation worse. And where I'm going with this, I know that other members of my street and the community also reached out that day. The town could have sort of paused there, you know, not that decisions made to pause that day and not finish painting the lines, because later that night, Friday night, they came and painted the fog lines, so it was kind of compounding the error, and, you know, it was one of those things that maybe the bits would have been a little bit lesser now that some of the work would have been done less. So it's just something that I thought should have been highlighted. I do want to say that I appreciate that the town tried to do something, and I just think it shouldn't go unnoticed that the town manager and others thought that there is a problem, and they wanted to do something. So I just want to say that I really appreciate that at least something was done. But I think the residents want to know what are the next steps on this, in terms of the timeframe to remove the lines, and then look at what are we going to do with the traffic issues here. I think addressing this, setting up some kind of committee to discuss this travel committee, and members of the community to figure out potential solutions, costs, pros and cons, whether we do something or not. But I think the town also needs to look at that there's, I think, a systematic travel, traffic issues in town. And I think the traffic on Ellington and Farmington is just a symptom to a bigger problem, and maybe an intersection of Converse and Route 5. Trying to improve that situation maybe would address and alleviate some of the issues. And it's not just our streets, also the streets on Circle Park in the morning, I know people cut through those streets as well. And I think it's just a matter of time when there's going to be some serious issues. I think we saw something recently with a traffic accident happen with a child going to school. I think we really need to look at it, and I think the other thing is also policing, policing the speed limit. I think the town manager sent some reports, some speeds going over 60, 80 miles an hour, things happen, especially late at night. So I think if we have the police officers sending some, giving out tickets, especially in the afternoons, mornings, maybe that will alert folks to be a little bit more cautious. So, thank you so much for your time.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, moving on to select board comments. Anybody off the bat? I just wanted to make a general comment on Wolf Swamp Fields. I think I mentioned it every meeting, but I'm there twice a week for baseball games, and it's really, people are using the track around the outside. I know we have a tenant starting, it's very exciting, and it's been really fantastic for the town. And I look forward to seeing what comes of it when we get all the ads up, and start getting some money coming in. And while I'm speaking, if I could just acknowledge my neighbors over here, I don't know if you're staying for our later discussion of what to do with the lines. And I understand the frustration with the timing, but we only meet every two weeks. I think that on town business timelines, this is about, this is light speed, what happened. And I've talked to Lynn about this a lot, there is, it's really hard to get a contractor out. There's just no getting around that, because they are, this is a small job that has been... We have to get a crew here to do any work, and there are other crews, they can't just peel somebody off. But I will save the rest of my comments for when we cover this in new business or old business. All right, anybody, oh, it's coming up soon, actually. Anybody else? No? Okay. Move on to the town manager's report.
Thank you, I have a few updates tonight. The Eastern Hamden Shared Public Health Services, which is comprised of Long Meadow as the lead community, Munson, Hamden, and Wilbraham, was informed that it's eligible and will be receiving an additional $163,000 in grant funding on top of our current Public Health Excellence Grant allotment. This is going to bring the total for FY '24 to $393,000. The additional funds were made possible through a capacity assessment completed by Health Director Finn McCool. The assessment looked at the shared service arrangement population size, a community resilience estimate, and our level of need. The funding directly supports the EHS-PHS program, including the full-time public health nurse, inspector, and shared services coordinator. This is an update, because we received some feedback last year of the notification, so we did receive a permit, fire department received a permit for fireworks at Long Meadow Country Club. They will be held on June 16th, and a permit for the display has been filed with the Long Meadow Fire Department. We plan to provide notification to residents by social media, signage, and a reverse 911 call before the event. The Community Compact IT Study is in the final stages, the consultant is writing the report, and we should have a draft to review in the next few weeks, and that will be presented at a future select board meeting. The Community Compact Waging Classification Study is also in its final stages. All interviews of staff with positions included in the study were conducted. The consultant is working on the grade groupings for the positions and finalizing job descriptions. Once those job descriptions are done, they will be distributed back out to staff for one final review. And then upon completion of the position gradings, the report will be written up, and then once accepted, we start the implementation process. And an update on the mobile app, we're continuing to work on this. Paperwork to authorize the app on the iTunes Store has been completed, the initial graphic design has been approved, and we're hoping to launch the app sometime in the beginning of June. And one quick update that didn't make it to my report, because it just came in today, we did get an update from the cell tower company here on Bliss, that Verizon is active. So hopefully people have noticed the increase in coverage. And that concludes my report, happy to take any questions that you have.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, Lynn, the public health supplemental funding, will that reduce the amount that the constituent towns have to pay in, or is that now going to increase, you know, we're going to hire more people and increase what we do?
Yeah, great question. We don't intend to hire more people, it will reduce the assessments that would go out to each community.
The, thank you for the update about Verizon, I think that's probably the number one question I get from people. It still doesn't work at the end of Bliss, when I turn on to Laurel, but we're getting there. The fireworks, what was the notification? I remember there being, people were surprised last year. What are we doing different this year?
The reverse 911 call to every household.
There were signs last year, too?
There were signs, there was, it was posted on social media, but we did not do a reverse 911 call.
Okay. And code red, is that, does that get every number in town, or is that if you've signed up for something? I don't remember.
The way we will do it will likely be the emergency route, so that every call gets a notice. If we did any of the opt-in ones, then not everyone would receive it.
So is that every home line, or is that, because my wife and I have cell phones, we don't have a home line, will we get a call?
You should, yes, it uses like a geo-locating, anybody within that area, if we use the emergency one, which we try not to use unless it's a real emergency, but because of the feedback we received last year, I think we decided that this year it's probably best to put out as much notice as possible.
Okay, great, thank you, Lynn. Anybody else? All right. Onto the Department Monthly Reports. I just wanted to, if you could pass on to Paul, appreciate the thorough response, or report on the code enforcement officer. Sounds like there's a lot going on, and it's really, it sounds like it's making a difference. And I know that, in my neighborhood at least, I don't have any particular concerns, but it sounds like there are people in other neighborhoods who are getting houses that have been laying dormant for years, and getting some attention. I think that's fantastic. And then just generally on the reports, I think something Mark asked about a lot, we haven't seen a report from DPW in a while. It's supposed to be at least quarterly, right?
Yeah, he's planning to be at your June 5 meeting. So there's been some conversation about whether the written monthly reports would really be the best way to go. This was the conversation between Sean and I. Or if quarterly in-person updates would be a better approach. They have stuff happening so rapidly that we thought that in-person would be a better opportunity. If you really feel strongly about written monthly reports, they're just, they're very labor-intensive for staff to prepare. And on the staff time on DPW, I don't, I'm a little hard pressed to have somebody do that as opposed to all the other work that they're trying to do.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to kind of differ with you a little bit here. I think that if you don't report it, if you don't communicate it, you know, sometimes what you did isn't nearly as important as is visible. And I think it's important for us to do that. The things that I miss the most are trash, water, sewer, volume usage records, those are invaluable, we negotiate contracts over those, we set prices based on, or fees, excuse me, for employees based on that. Not having those numbers really is a concern to me personally, I don't know how everybody else feels. I think that your point about, you know, don't spend forever writing the report is well-taken, but I think we, there's a way to come up with a report template that literally is a 15, 20-minute fill in the blanks, here's what we did. You know, here's the capital projects, here's the projects we worked on, and if you go way, way, way back, it literally, to my displeasure sometimes, was just a kind of running total, and every month they added a sentence or two. They never dropped anything off, and so you were reading, you know, four years of history. But that idea of just adding a sentence or so about each project, I thought was good, because we could see what was going on. You know, the DPW is the most visible, if not, it's certainly one of the most, if not the most visible, department in town, and I think not only having us, but I'm shocked by the number of people who even before this meeting said, I read the handouts for the select board meeting. So people in town are reading them and looking them. I think we don't do a good enough job communicating as it is, and you can never over-communicate. So I'm in favor of trying to get these reports out, and I'll be glad to work with whoever it takes to try to develop some system that makes it so it's not burdensome.
Yeah, I agree with Mark here. This is, in theory, if you're preparing for a meeting for every three months, that should be just as much work as just preparing a report. I think Paul's reports, and don't take this the wrong way, are a good example of getting the information out, but not being floundering, it's just bam, here it is. And that is what the DPW, I think, can do. It doesn't have to be fancy, but it's just a line about what we're doing, so people know what's going on. Because if we see Sean every three months, things get forgotten, things happen three months before. So I'd much prefer taking the time, I don't think it should take much more time to write it, because you should be taking notes on what you're doing anyway, so you can talk to us about it every three months. So hopefully, on the whole, it'll wash out. Anybody else?
Do you not want the quarterly updates in person then? Or do you want that in addition to?
Personally, I think if we're getting monthly reports, then I'm not sure we need quarterly updates unless there are specific issues. You know, and it may be, because the DPW is such a major department for us, you know, it may be worth having updates about something very specific, different every time we do that, once a quarter. And it might be buildings and grounds one time, or buildings one time, grounds one time, roads and streets, or something like that, as opposed to, you know, an all-encompassing DPW global report of the year all night, I'd fear.
Yeah, I'd rather have Sean, or whoever, spend the equivalent of two hours doing the reports than coming at all. But if there's something specific, that should be the option, but we can do that anyway.
Okay. I will work with them on that.
Anything else on reports, remember? Okay. Meeting minutes, nothing tonight, Mike?
No.
Okay. Then we have an update on the Ellington-Farmington traffic calming. So we heard a little bit about this tonight, Lynn, you want to go ahead?
Sure, so late today, we received one of the last quotes we were waiting on, we still have one more that we expect to receive tomorrow. So the DPW reached out to five firms that can do this kind of work with the differing options. There's the painting option, there's the grinding option, or a sandblasting option. The option that had been done on Greenacre was sandblasting. The milling would leave the lines in the road that would, could cause, or would likely cause some vibration as they were driven over. And then the painting is the least expensive option, but will wear off, and will likely start showing through before we have a touch-up application done the following year. So you see in this memo here, it ranges from $4,500 for painting, to $15,000 to mill the lines, or an $18,000 quote to sandblast. The top one, I'm just going to not even address, because it's so much higher than the other one. It's not a local firm, but it was one that had responded. So it's now really up to the board to decide which approach you'd like to take, and then we'll get it scheduled. We do have some initial commitment that it should only be a couple weeks out to have this fit into someone's schedule.
Go ahead, Mark.
I hate to say this, but I think painting, as much as it's temporary, is the financially responsible way to go. Frankly, your comments about it would leave the sandblast thing, or would leave a problem surface in the middle, that's great. I think it's better to have cars, you know, it's kind of like the rumble strips on the side, you know, you're crossing the center of the street, so I'm not too opposed to that, but I'd like to see what $4,500 worth of painting does. And, you know, if you look at the numbers, I mean, we could paint it four times for the cost of one, you know, sandblasting, and hopefully we can get a sense that as you paint it, as the paint wears off, so will some of the yellow. I, you know, I just think it's quicker, and it's probably certainly more cost-efficient, and it may account for a lot of what we want to achieve.
Tom?
Sandblasting might cause the least amount of damage, be the most permanent solution, and it goes pretty quick. I mean, you know, most people aren't familiar with the sandblasting process, but, you know, it is a very effective thing, and it would, I think would meet our needs pretty quickly. And it'll be done, we wouldn't have to worry about, you know, lines showing up again, or any of those things. And it won't damage the road itself.
I don't want to paint and then sandblast later, because then that turns 18 grand into 22, 22.5. And I think that one, if there's a black line going down the middle, I don't think people on Ellington are going to be happy with that. I know we heard, as a temporary solution, but I don't want to do a temporary solution. I think that we should, I'm in favor of sandblasting, because I think we need to just, as I said last week, reset. I don't think blacking out the paint is resetting, and I know we heard from Mr. Mann earlier on the price of the painting, which I don't think accurately reflected what it actually cost to paint that, not that this helps, but just for context, if that was an add-on job, it was because they were already here, it would have cost a lot more to come out and just paint the two streets. So I don't think the $500 is accurate on that. But that's, so that's where I'm at, I think, but I do, would have to recuse myself from any vote here on who to use if we sandblast, because Arment Construction is one of my clients, just so everyone knows. Dan?
Yeah, I fully support sandblasting the lines. I think we owe it to the residents of Ellington and Farmington neighborhood because of, obviously, we didn't take the right protocols to begin with. It does pain me certainly to spend this money, because it shouldn't have happened in the first place, but I think we do need to do the right thing for the residents, and that's sandblasting in my mind. I do want to obviously see the other quotes that are coming. And Lynn, I do want to also make sure that this is going to be, you know, the next couple weeks, not, you know, three months down the road, so I just want to make sure that we're going to...
I can't guarantee that right now, I don't, we don't have a commitment from anyone. We have quotes. We have, they had verbally, Arment had said they should be able to fit us in, but that's not a written contract. So I'm not, I can't make that promise right now.
So I think it's certainly important that we know timing of when they can actually do the sandblasting on top of the cost. I would like to see something done right, but also fairly soon, because this was an error on the town, and I think we need to fix the situation in a timely fashion, so that's my thoughts.
Do we have any idea when Ellington and Farmington are next up to be paved?
I don't know that, no.
Okay. I remember, they're not on the next two-years list, but I didn't know if there was a list beyond...
Farmington's going to get paved pretty quickly.
Are they going to do the whole thing, or is this going to be the eight feet?
I think it's the eight feet, but that's all, I assume that's all they're obligated to do.
Right. Do you know, Lynn, are they, is it an eight-foot pave? I know they can't just do the...
It normally would be, I don't, the construction area seems fairly large, so I could confirm.
They've destroyed the end of my driveway, but hopefully we'll get back to that.
I seem to recall, because I had commented with Sean about where they've extended over Laurel Street and over Route 5, that they patched it less than eight feet, and I think Sean commented to me that when we repaved the whole road, was part of his comment. So my sense is that the whole road is scheduled to be repaved, and not just that part, but I'm not certain.
And just a general comment, and I know, I think I kind of went into a fugue state when I was speaking at the last meeting, but this brings me back to my point that whatever ends up happening here, someone's going to be unhappy, and we're not going to go back on it. We can't, if it's a speed table, if it's, whatever it is, a dip, once it's done, you know, people are, it may not do exactly what we thought, but we can't keep trying stuff, I think, because we have a whole town to run. And it's, selfishly, I want this, our neighborhood to be safer, but, so we have to really think about these things. And that's why we're working on the traffic calming policy, and we're going to hear from everyone, but I would guess, I know there's been chatter now that people like the lines, we heard from people that like the lines. So we're going to, we're not going to get a consensus at any of our public hearings on this, I would think, but just want to reiterate that, because I, you know, I got to go back and live there, but I've got to make as many people as happy as can, but our goal is safety. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I guess the question that I need to ask, I think we should all ask, is, A, what fiscal year are we doing this in, and how are we going to pay for it? I mean, $18,000 is a lot of money. And unless... And unless we got eighteen thousand dollars, burn a hole in our pocket, somebody's gonna overrun a budget somewhere. And, you know, I'm sure at the end of the year, there's probably free cash of at least eighteen thousand dollars. So it's not that the town doesn't have the money. The fact is, though, that it's unlikely that, that the budget that's gonna be doing this has the money. So we're gonna have to start, we will have to move some money, I believe, to, to make this happen. I just want to, and, and you can't do it until you know what fiscal year you're doing it in.
Well, just in terms of, Mark, I mean, the town has to have contingency funds for things to show up that aren't on the budget.
Those funds are held by the Finance Committee.
Yeah, well, then the Finance Committee should release it. But I mean, it's, it's not something we planned on, but it's something we have to take care of. And, you know, I think we'll be able to...
I'm not saying there's no money for it, Tom. I'm, you know, I'm just saying we need to identify how it's gonna get paid for. And certainly, getting unrestricted money from the Finance Committee is a way to do it. They're sitting on fifty thousand dollars, they haven't allocated any of that money in the last many, many years. So it's available.
But, yeah.
Yeah, so I think, I was also gonna ask about when Ellington was scheduled to be repaved next, because I think that is important for me to know, at least. You know, that, that would make using, you know, painting over it more of an attractive option for me. And then also, the, you know, the touch-ups every year, that wouldn't, would that necessarily cost forty-five hundred every year?
They're not gonna go down and get little slots, they'd have to just run the line again.
It's hard to say. It's hard to say. They, they couldn't, they would need a second set of equipment. If we incorporated it into the line painting contract, we'd need a separate set of equipment that was spraying, just the black line. So it's hard, it's hard to say. I don't know.
And then I just wanted to clarify something. So I think Mark mentioned that sandblasting it would create ridges, it wouldn't create ridges, right?
Sandblasting would not.
Yeah, Mark, I was talking about milling, I think.
Milling, okay. So with sandblasting, there's no, no damage at all, right?
Ellington was repaved, like, maybe four or five years ago. There was a major work there, the whole line replaced, so that's where it was repaved.
So that'll be way down. Yeah, I'm looking at the list, and it's not on there.
It's five, five, ten years, though.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Dan.
Thanks. Just back to Farmington, so if they're gonna pave maybe just eight feet with the DPW, or who would be looking into, could we potentially do the entire road at that point? Just what makes most sense? If we have, we have to pave it over in, you know, two years, can we just do it?
It was already bid out in the contract for the waterline work. So it would be a change order, it would likely exceed the monetary threshold of a change order.
Again, I'm fairly new to this, but I'm just...
Why, though, I mean...
I'm just saying, if they're gonna, if they're gonna pave, if they're, if they've ripped up half the road and they're paving eight feet, or whatever, whatever it is, I mean...
They, they's the operative word, Dan, they being Eversource, I believe, right? Or whoever's doing the...
It's the waterline work, it's a town project.
So...
So this is, this is not Eversource, this is the town.
This is the town. Town hired a company to do the water mains. But it would be, as we saw, or as we heard from Sean, the asphalt itself is exorbitantly expensive. So I think it wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a small thing. I'm with you, but...
I'm just saying, if they're gonna pave the road anyways in two years, I don't, I don't know what the plan is. But I just want to try to avoid just a road that looks terrible, and, you know, it's, when we could fix it now, that's all. I just don't know if we've looked at those numbers, or...
Farmington will be status quo, because there was no lines on it to begin with. There are no lines that will be put on it.
Right.
The point of the, and you weren't on the board at the time, the point of the eight-foot minimum dimension requirement, Dan, was so that we didn't end up with that, you know, nine-inch-wide ridge down the middle of the road, or going across the road, that you're bouncing on. And we found that eight feet makes it, I think it's six feet actually, but whatever it is. It makes it so that it's more, you know, a more acceptable patch as they dig up the roads. And so I'm not so worried about Farmington as if they complete it. I tell you that right now, you go across Laurel where they tied in, it's a mess, because it's a, it's like it's a nine-inch-wide patch. But I think that's gonna be, you know, redone at the end when they really repave it.
Yeah, I mean, my only, my only thought is that it's, these are wide roads, as we know. So six feet, it's new pavement, and then the other side, you know, maybe needs to be paved in a couple of years. I just, I just wanted, wanted it to be part of the, I guess, conversation or, you know, research while we have the opportunity. That, that's just my thought.
Go ahead, Mark.
I think the, you know, I want to move past lines a little bit and talk about traffic calming, because I think that's the, the real issue. And, you know, I said this at our last meeting, Farmington, Ellington are two roads in town of many, many where the residents complain about speeding, about, you know, poor driving, or whatever it is. And I think we need to get to a comprehensive solution and not go road by road. Otherwise, we're gonna be sitting here every night, working on traffic calming, on Redfern traffic calming, on Grassy Gutter and traffic calming, on every road that we go through in town. I think that, you know, we have the, I believe we have the mechanisms in place. We have a traffic committee that has not been as active as it might, might want it to be. I think we've got to set up some processes where, you know, they come back when they have recommendations. But clearly, you know, I mean, we got a letter from somebody that said, said, you know, make all the streets dead-end. I mean, we can have every street in town be a dead-end, and that's not gonna solve, solve the problem. So I, I, I think we've got to address traffic calming, we've got to address it in a comprehensive manner, and not just for one road or two roads. And it comes down to, in my opinion, enforcement and better attenu, attention by our, our police officers.
The, the Converse and Longmount Street project we were talking about last week, that's the rotary, that's to make it more efficient for...
No rotary.
Not, sorry, not a rotary, no, not a rotary. Sorry, I go over you somewhere, everything's a rotary.
This will be no issue compared to that.
No, yes, the, the intersection will be more conducive for traffic taking the correct turn, right? Is part of the idea?
Yeah, it'll be re-engineered to accommodate the traffic flow and the turning radius, yes.
Okay. So there's that, I guess. Sorry to say rotary, I'm gonna wake up in the middle of the night upset about that. All right, well, do we have a, a motion on what somebody would like to do on this?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we sandblast to remove those W O lines.
Second.
And as discussion, would you like to pick a contractor, a lowest quote?
I'll leave it up to town manager.
The lowest qualified bidder.
Right, I think, well, right, and so what we heard...
That's how the, our contracts, I think that's our requirement from the state, it's the lowest qualified bidder.
So Arment or...
No, it's the lowest qualified bidder.
Lowest qualified bidder, okay. Well, I suppose I can vote on that, then. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have discussion on rescinding board committee appointments. Entertain a motion to remove Patrick Gottschlitt from the appointment as the, as a member of the Conservation Commission?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved, I'm sorry.
So moved, in a second.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I think people at home deserve to understand why, why this is taking place. I think the issue is conflicts of his, and his inability to attend, attend the meetings. I think people need to understand that the Conservation Commission has, I was gonna say, I think they are legal obligations, but certain operational obligations to address certain things, and his inability to participate has made that difficult, or unable, actually, for the Conservation Commission to meet those obligations, and that's why we're moving to take this step.
All right, thank you. I wasn't sure what, well, I guess we'd have the letter. Wasn't sure what we could say. All right, thank you, Mark. Anything further? All right, all those in favor? Anyone like to move on to the next part?
Yeah. Just a quick comment. I, I believe residents serve at the pleasure of the board in all the committees that they intend, that they participate in. And to the extent that there have become issues with Mr. Stephen Platzer's participation on several boards and committees, I recommend we withdraw Mr. Platzer's appointment to the DEI and the COA committee. I move that, I'll make this a motion. I move we withdraw Mr. Platzer's appointment to the DEI and COA committees.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? I'll just note that this is a hard thing to do, and I do it with a lot of hesitation, but I feel that it is appropriate. Anybody else? All those in favor? All right, finally, in new business, set the annual twenty-twenty-three, sorry, set the twenty-twenty-three annual town election warrant. Prove a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I'll move that, that we set the town election warrant, I'll just do it as stated in the, in the handout for the minutes, for, for the thirteenth of June, twenty-twenty-three, seven o'clock in the morning, for the purposes of electing one select board member, three school committee members, one planning board member, and one housing authority member.
Give me a second.
Second.
All right, anything further? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, moving on to new business, bond anticipation notes. Go ahead, Paul.
I'll make one comment, though, regarding the line removal. Finance committee does have a reserve fund. Technically, it's for emergency and unforeseen items.
This is unforeseen?
And, not or. However, within the last two months of fiscal year, you can make transfers from within other operating budgets with the approval of the select board and the finance committee. So there is money available, it would just have to be transferred from an account that has existing funds. So you go there, so it could be done this fiscal year, is the bottom line.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay. Bond anticipation notes, Erica's with us, which is good. Erica had gone out on May tenth, we entertained bids for a number of authorizations, which are outlined in the letter. The LHS air handlers, water main replacement drawings, water quality flow enhancement, sewer capacity management, and the stormwater asset management. The, the ban that we were looking for was one million ninety thousand dollars for a half a year, one hundred and seventy-seven days. Erica received seven bids, which, which was, which was good, knowing that the competition was there. We had bids ranging from four point zero one-two percent to five point five percent. And obviously, our recommendation is to go with the low bidder, which is Piper Sandler and Company, with the lowest net interest cost of four point zero one-two percent. Also, this month, we are retiring the last payments on Kingsbury and Farmelia. Those were in the FY twenty-three budgets. Those authorizations have been fully paid, just bring that to your attention also.
Paul, I was an English major, and I'm a lawyer, so I, this is all Greek to me. The Piper Sandler Company has the highest rate, but the lowest net interest cost. Can you explain that?
They're, they're basically paying us points. You know how when you were going out for a mortgage, if you paid points upfront, you reduce your, your rate? This is kind of working the opposite. They're going to pay us a premium. They're going to give us a certain dollar amount upfront, which I think is itemized here, a little over ten thousand dollars.
Six forty-nine thirty.
Right, so it reduces the actual net interest cost to that lower rate.
And so only, only two of the offerors offered that, that premium?
Only two offerers offered a premium, and all the other ones were straight interest.
Okay. And why, why are two of them offering a premium?
Probably because they, they, they may have investors who certainly want a higher rate, for whatever reason, and are willing to pay the money upfront to get that rate. You know, I guess it's one of those decisions, you know, why would you pay points? Again, just reversing it is the best example I can give, is why would you pay points upfront to get a lower interest rate? They're just doing the opposite.
Okay.
But it, it's more of an investor's theory of what they want kind of thing, and what their investors are, are willing to pay, and why, so...
Thanks. This is my first bond anticipation note, so I'm...
Yeah, it also happens more often on a full bond. If we went out for a permanent bond, you, you would also see that happening more predominantly in that particular case. It, it could be one of the first times that I've seen it, actually, also want a bond anticipation note. You know, just to put this in perspective, too, I mean, last year, when, again, we had a renew last year, that thirty thousand dollar note that we just paid off, the interest rate at that point in time, one point six percent. So you can see how the interest rates have kind of impacted our borrowing capacity.
Mark, go ahead.
Paul, what's gonna happen in one hundred and seventy-seven days?
Well, we did it for a hundred and seven, I'm glad you asked that, Mark, because I was gonna lead into that afterwards. But what we're looking to do is, because the, the short, very short-term interest rates are higher than the long-term interest rates, what we wanted to do is, is in, in the fall, kind of look at, is it feasible for us to go out and take a longer-term bond out, a permanent bond? What happens with a permanent bond is that there are higher issuance costs, you know, into tens of thousands of dollars, as opposed to the lower, lower, the lower bond issuance cost when it comes to the ban. So we're looking to see if that little reduction, and, and right now, we've done some preliminary numbers. Right now, a, a ten-year note is what we're looking at, and the interest rate is about three, a little over three percent. So you can see from that, you know, we're talking about a one percent. But given that one percent variable over, it's basically would be a three million dollar bond that we would be taking out, that could very well be, in the long run, advantageous to keep on rolling over bans.
So part two of my question is, what other borrowing do you anticipate rolling in? You talked about three million dollars, so there's two million dollars more. Are these water, sewer, all-encompassing, because I don't recall anything coming up at the town meeting now.
Well, you'd have to go back a year for the town meeting. We'd have, basically, what we'd have are the remaining bond amounts that are on these five.
Right, right.
And then we would have to add Emerson Road Water Mains, nine hundred thousand dollars. We'd have to add Cooley Drive Water Mains, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we would also, at that point in time, the feasibility study, Mark, we would probably take out and, and bond, you know, maybe only three to five years for that. We could possibly roll that one in. If we rolled all those three, feasibility study, eight hundred thousand, Emerson Road, Cooley, with the remaining amounts that are on the other five, it would be a three point one-one-five borrowing in the fall.
Thank you.
Just had a listen. So this corporation, Piper Sandler, is on Minnesota, it looks like. And do we have to, are we restricted to Massachusetts on any of these? Like a percentage that we use for bans, or anything like that, or...
No, we are not restricted.
Okay, all right. Have you ever worked with this company before?
No, not to my recollection, I've actually never heard of them, quite honestly. So I'm pretty sure we never have dealt with, I don't know if you've had any experience with them, Erica?
I don't have any experience, but I did ask Reagan, she is familiar with them, so she was comfortable going with them, because I had the same concerns, that I had never heard of them.
Yeah, well, it says they've been around since eighteen eighty-nine or something, so that's pretty good. Okay, thanks.
Again, like I said, there's the ban issue, and again, I'm glad Mark asked the question. I did want to prep you that in the fall, we're either gonna be coming back for renewal of the bans, rollover, or we're gonna have a bond proposal, let's put in front of you. If we do a bond proposal, it's likely that we would have to go to, we'd have to add some money at town meeting to pay that first interest payment on, on the, on the bond, because they're normally, they're done semi-annually. So we would have an interest payment that would be due at the end of FY twenty-four. Because we probably wouldn't borrow... Because we probably wouldn't borrow money until maybe November, sometime in November, when these become due.
Paul, you and I, this isn't our first rodeo on bonds and vans and stuff like that. I think, though, people need to hear, especially some people who are new to the select board, that financing for municipal bonds may not be what we're familiar with, with mortgages, in terms of, it doesn't have to be a straight-line payment through the life of the, you know, so much a month or so much a year. You can, depending on what we want to do, what the bar, what the lender wants to do, you can pay more upfront, you can delay some, pay more later, and sometimes it works to the town's advantage. And sometimes, sometimes it does. But, but I think people need to understand that when we talk about a, a 10-year bond or a five-year bond, it's not a flat-lined equal payment that we get every, every year, every month. And like you said, I think that's to our advantage most of the time.
And again, I'm glad you brought that up also, because that is something also that we do want to take advantage of, because there are points in the very near future with the water and sewer debt service, where they drop fairly substantially, and we want to, we can input this debt service, so that the debt service remains fairly level over the, you know, the next five, five years or so. It'll, it'll lessen or take out the volatility that could potentially go into the rates if we have fluctuations in the debt service for, for all the enterprise funds, water, sewer, and stormwater.
And so what Paul's saying is, is, is a couple of borrowing payments drop down, you know, maybe we can have this be low upfront and then increase later on to compensate for the ones that are dropping.
This is a general question. Can you, do you set all the structures at the beginning? When you take out the bond or the band, and is there any, can you renegotiate down the road?
The only time that you can renegotiate it is if the bond is callable, which for a short-term bond like this is probably unlikely. Usually on a 20-year bond or anything longer, you can, if interest rates are favorable, which we've done in the past, you can probably call it after 10 years.
And we did it on the high school we had.
We did it on both high school projects.
It's like a refinance.
Exactly.
Real estate attorney.
That's exactly it.
Okay, that makes sense.
So Josh, I'm going to make a motion that we award Piper Sandler Company a 177-day, $1,090,000 bond anticipation note at the net interest cost of 4.012% as recommended by the finance committee and treasurer.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, thank you, Paul. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. All right, we have a number of one-day liquor license applications.
I'll make a motion for the first one, for St. Mary's KFC, the event on, at 519 Long Meadow Street, pasta dinner. And it is on 6:10, 23, 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. I'd like to move to approve the liquor license.
Second.
All right, any further? All those in favor? All right, keep going, Tom.
I'll go to the next one here.
Are they all one document?
Oh, St. Mary's Appreciation Dinner. With a one-day liquor license, volunteer appreciation on May 23rd, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. I move that we approve their liquor license. One-day liquor license.
Second.
All right, any further? All those in favor?
Okay, Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund is asking for one, two one-day liquor license, one for an art show event on June 1st from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and the second for an international dinner on June 22nd from 5:00 to 7:30. Both to be held at the Long Meadow Adult Center. I move that we approve the one-day liquor license for these two events.
Second.
And Mike, sorry, for all of these, we have the tips, we have the insurance, everything. Okay, all right, go ahead, Mark.
I just have a comment that I got a call from somebody who, a resident in town, who's concerned that the Long Meadow Adult Center events are sold out with primarily non-residents. And I know we've had this discussion of, we try to open our facilities for everybody. But, you know, I think that there, we need to, you know, the town, the residents paid to build the facility. I know some of these aren't, aren't town, you know, events necessarily. But I'd love to see the adult center put together something that, you know, town residents can sign up, starting at 9:00, and everybody can sign up at 3:00, or, or whatever it is, because if, if town residents truly feel that they're getting squeezed out of these events, I think it's a shame. On the other hand, you know, we want to give every, you know, I'm not trying to create a two-tiered, two-pricing structure. It's just to give town residents kind of a, a heads up. And I'm not, you know, I, I think the department has to run, run it themselves. I'm not.
Do we have a cap, or is there a capability?
So they do that. They do that for all of the programming, except the international dinners. And that's what's been selling out within an hour and a half of tickets becoming available.
Is that an LACCF decision?
Yes. No, no. So the adult center, for months now, they've been working on this. It's a good problem to have. It's wildly successful overall, all the programming is. And so they've been making minor tweaks in the last year and a half that it's been open. And all programming that is outside of the international dinner, you can register, I think it's 48 hours or a couple of days. It's in the voice. The, the dates are actually printed in there. So residents have preferential options to register for programs, except the international dinner. They're trying something new for this next month, because it's been a lot for staff to juggle for those dinner events, because they've been so popular. They are doing a general opening for anyone for those dinners, to buy tickets. They generally sell out within two hours. So they're going to try this new, open to everybody this month at the same time. Because they've been doing the staggered, sorry, I'm doing a bad job explaining this. All the programs had been open for residents only for a few days before open to the general public. They were selling out the international dinner so quickly, and there was, I guess, some other issues that were happening with the number of tickets and the waitlist. So they decided they're going to try something new and just open it to everybody that same day that tickets become available. Still maintaining the resident and non-resident staggering for the other programs. They're trying that this next coming month. If it's not successful, or it's still causing problems for them, they'll continue to tweak it.
How would that help?
How's that different?
Yeah, I don't, I don't follow.
It's different because it's open to everyone from the moment that the tickets are available. That's just the international dinner.
That's the way it is now?
Just the, no.
How's it now?
Residents have preferential dates.
Even for the international dinners?
I believe it was, yes. I know it is for all the other programming. This was a change they were making.
Josh? Oh, so the more, but that's the ones coming up, so marker for somebody who tried to buy?
Yes, there's many, many people that those dinners have sold out the last, I don't know, however many they've had. And they, they hear a lot of grumblings from people that they can't get tickets. They reach capacity within two hours, and it's sold out.
Tom?
Well, I think we also need to be mindful of the fact that many of the folks who are not current residents are folks who've been residents of Long Meadow most of their adult life, and they may have moved over the line to Enfield. And so it isn't like, you know, they're coming from long distances to come to our adult center events. But it's good that, you know, folks are aware of it, and they're trying to do their best. And I guess we'll just have to have more international dinners to meet everyone's needs.
That's a lot to put on staff to do that. It seems like a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's something that can be done, I didn't quite follow what, how that will help the situation. We can talk more about that. But anything further on the, on these applications? Okay, all those in favor? All right, next up, we have a notification about a dog barking. I don't know if we have the address, from Christopher, 611 Frank Smith Road, from Christopher Choi. So the way I read the bylaw and the, the bylaw and the statute, if we get a complaint in writing, we have to take some action. And what, and that's the bylaw. What the statute says is, if we get a complaint, we have to investigate and cause an examination under oath of the complainant to determine whether the dog is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. There's no allegations here that the dog is a dangerous dog. But by my reading, we have to investigate or cause the investigation. And what I, we talked about this when we were setting our agenda last week. And we have an animal control officer in town. And to me, I think the best course of action here would be to refer this matter to the animal control officer, who has not investigated this yet. And then we can get more information and then we can hold our public hearing when we notify the parties. So we notify, tell the complainant and tell the dog owner, so we can hear, hear in public what the allegations are in any defense. So, and Mark, you seem to have some other thoughts on what we should do here, or what we require, if you want to speak on that.
No, actually, I don't have other thoughts. I think that my concern is that I would like to think that "we" is a collective "we," meaning the, the office of the select board, and not necessarily the select board meeting every other month, or two Mondays a month, which seemed to me that, you know, I would have thought that when this email came in, that Mike would have felt or could have been empowered to say to the person, you know, our response, the select board's response is, you need to get the animal control officer involved. Or we, you know, it needs to be investigated, so it's not a party one said and party two said. And then when it came to the select board for the first time, it would have come fully investigated as a hearing. So I, I, I guess I'm agreeing with you, Josh, but just didn't think that we needed to wait the two weeks to, or however it's long it's been since we got the email, nor do we, as a board, need to say, you know, call the animal control officer. I think that's something that, you know, if, if it says investigate or cause to be investigated, we cause it to be investigated by saying, "Mike, next time you get an email like that, you know, tell the person, here's the process, that they need a police report or an animal control officer."
I may have been reading this, I don't know if I read it too literally, but when I read the select board shall take action, I was coming back to our planning board referral issue. The select board shall take, take action is us, is my thinking. Maybe this is something we should run by town council. But that's my reading of it, that when it says take action, it can't be done behind the scenes. Not that, not that that's what you're saying to do, but unless, unless take action can be, anytime we get a complaint, we have a policy that Mike investigates, so.
But Mike's not doing the investigation.
I'm sorry, Mike causes, causes the investigation. So I, I guess that's a question we should bring to town council. But since we do have it here, I think we should take action. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so when you look at the, the regulations and so forth, barking dogs fit in a category that is kind of tough to, to take too much action on. But, you know, today, things have changed. And one of the things that we need to consider as a board is the fact that there are a lot of folks who are working at home. And, you know, maybe we have to look at, like, restrictions in terms of noise, you know, you know, from barking dogs during the day, work hours, you know, and then have some, definitely some open hours where dogs could exercise their voices without any consequences. And then, you know, after a certain time in the evening, you know, we, there's noise restrictions. And, you know, I don't know, as I look at this, I think, well, we need to consider some of these things also, because there's a, mostly because there's, I don't know, it didn't say anything in the letter about the person, the dog barking at night. But, you know, if people are working during the day from home, we may want to take that into consideration also, in some way.
Go ahead, Mark.
But the fact is, until we get a, a third-party independent investigation, and I'll use that term, you know, what we've got is a letter from somebody complaining about something. And I think I used it when I was talking earlier this evening, that, you know, there's three sides to every story, your side, my side, and the truth, which is probably something in between those two. And, and that's the intent of having either an animal control officer, or, you know, hopefully not, but maybe even a police officer, you know, investigate when there's a neighbor-to-neighbor concern. And, and that allows, gives the select board backing, but facts, to make, to make the decision, whether it's because there's excess noise or, or not. The problem is, what one person considers excess noise, all the other neighbors may say, "It's okay with us." You know, it's like the line down Ellington Road. Couple of people like it.
Just, if I may, just to let you know, I did reach back out to the person who made the complaint. Did not receive a response at this point, so that is all the information that I was working with. And I didn't know any jurisdiction beyond what it said in the statute for following up on it. So I kind of just wanted to play it, play it safe.
So I, so I'd ask if we could reach out to council and ask that question for an interpretation of that statute, or, because I, I think it would be helpful to know what the select board shall take action, what that means in general. If there's, if it's a strict interpretation, we need to know that. If it's a little looser, that, that's good. Go ahead, Tom.
Well, also, when you think about the number of dogs that are in town, there are a lot of dogs in Long Meadow, you know, and so that means a lot of people are doing all the right things, because we don't get this many letters. I, I think this is the first letter I've gotten, and, you know.
Mark, I'm pretty serious.
Oh, yeah, a long time ago.
Not very often, you know, so, so again, people shouldn't panic, because most people are doing the right thing, you know. We just have to see what we can do to help resolve this conflict.
A lot of good, a lot of good dogs in town, that's for sure.
Josh, my, my only point is that, that we've now delayed our response two weeks, a minimum, or something like that, when in fact, tonight, we could have had theoretically a report from an animal control officer. And I don't know which way that report would have gone. And my, it, it's not to short-circuit the process, but what it's, to do is, my intent is to make our work here more effective and efficient, so that we're the, if you will, the adjudicator of last resort, not of first resort. Because what's really going to happen is, every time we get a letter, we're going to have to wait two weeks, meet and say, "Yeah, call the animal control officer, call, call the police." I'd much rather let somebody know, "Here's the process." You know, and, and you get all your, if, if you still have a complaint, if the animal control officer is telling us it's a viable complaint, then we can literally have a hearing, and I'd sent you the, you know, the hearing is pretty formal kind of an approach, so.
Swearing in everything.
So, you know, I, I, I hope to never do one of these things. And hopefully, that clears a lot of this out.
I mean, can't we just take a look at the, the bylaw as well, and, and make that, just clean that up a bit? In terms of, they should be, this person should be contacting not, not the select board directly?
What statute says to the, to the hearing authorities?
Yeah, also, I've had people mention this, you know, similar issue to me, and they've gone to the animal control, and they've basically said, write a complaint to the select board. So, you know, the select board does need to initiate this. I think, Josh, I think you're right that we should have town council take a look at this and get some clarification. But I think, at least right now, we can move to initiate investigation and ask animal control to look at this.
Yeah, I, I think that's what we got to do. I want more information. And Mark, I hope it does, I hope what you say is correct. I hope that's what we can do. But at least for tonight, we should refer this out. And then we'll see, see what we hear. So, have a motion?
So I move that the select board initiated investigation, or ask the, ask animal control to initiate, initiate an investigation into the complaint sent to us by Christopher Choi.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, anything further? All those in favor? Okay, and then next up, we have the legal RFP review process. Lynn, you want to, go ahead? Lynn, you want to, go ahead?
Sure. So a while ago, you had asked, I think it had been possibly even a goal for FY twenty-three to go out to bid for both town council and labor council services. We did that right at the turn of the, roughly February, actually. We went out to bid. We've received eight responses. They're summarized in this document attached to the agenda for you. This is under the select board authority. So the appointment of town council and labor council is a select board authority. And so now it's up to the board on how to handle this. I can make a recommendation to you that you direct me to review the submissions with a core group of department heads that seek legal counsel more often than some others, and bring a recommendation back to you. Or you can do a public vetting if you'd like. But you're somewhat limited in your discussions. They, they need to be in public session. There is no option for executive session in this topic.
Yes, this came up, Lynn and I have talked about this a lot. And I, given that we don't have the direct talking, we, we do occasionally, but most of the direct contact with town council is through Lynn and the department heads. I thought it would, they would be better suited to, to vet, to do this process and to give us a recommendation because they'll have just boots-on-the-ground experience on how it will work and how, how the fee structures will, how many hours will be useful? If a retainer is a good idea? We would just be starting from scratch on learning that, or at least I would. So that was, Lynn and I talked about that, and I think her recommendation is a good one. Mark, so you had your hand up?
Thanks. I, I, I think that part of the information that we need is, is the data on how much we use town attorneys or town council. All of these are hourly rates. And frankly, if the difference, you know, if we use very few hours, it, it makes more of a difference to me because we might want to put more emphasis on having somebody local as opposed to if we use, you know, and, and pay a little bit more, but they're local. And on the other hand, if we're using a lot of hours, and I know you never know from time to time how many hours we're going to use, but we could certainly look back at our past couple of years and look at what I'll call general town council. And then I know for our legal, for our personnel and HR support, you know, that kind of comes in when we're doing contract negotiations more than anything else. But, so it would, it would help Lynn, I think, if, if we had the amount that we use our, our, our legal fees so we can better understand what we're, what we're asking for here. I mean, I don't know if we use, you know, town council for ten hours a month or fifty hours a month. I have no idea.
So there's a retainer for both firms right now.
Right.
It's, one of them's $12,000, the labor council's like $12,000 a year. And town council is $64,000 a year. And then there's projects that happen outside of that retainer that almost never happens with labor council. It's just generally the 12,000. But town council, that does happen frequently.
Do you get billed, is the time accounted for?
Yes.
That is, even if it's covered by the retainer?
Yes, and it's broken out by project.
But, but yet, none of these, well, a couple of them say would discuss a retainer. But, but most of those don't say that in these proposals, correct?
Right, there's some at the end, I think, that do have a, there's the à la carte option at the end for that mead, taler, mina, costa. They have a monthly flat fee, which is similar to how we're billed right now for the retainer.
Right. But yet, our current attorneys did not offer that. Well, it says also the current arrangement of a monthly retainer. So how do, I mean, how do you judge apples and strawberries or apples and, you know, baseballs?
Well, like, so part of what I, my thinking was, for instance, Lynn can call other town managers to get an, an opinion on a different attorney or firm. And that's not really something that we can do in open session, I think.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's great for finding out, gee, did, you know, does the firm Josh Levine, are they any good, are they responsive, or whatever? But, but ultimately, I think we also want to say, I, I hope they're all going to come up and say, you know, they're very good, very reputable, do a great job, da, 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 da. But how are we going to know that these guys cost 50% more than, or twice as much as, as somebody else if we don't have?
Oh, right, well, yeah. And I think that Lynn and the department heads can dig into that and get us a real comparison and say, here's, what would you actually, what would the actual deal be? Because proposals are one thing, but if you work on negotiating.
I mean, it's also helpful that they all provided hourly rates. So you can use that to, as a benchmark. And I also know what our current retainer is and what's covered under that. I, I think we can pull that together with the current information we have and how they submitted their bids.
Tom?
Yeah, I, you know, this list, there's, there's eight different attorneys, or different practices. Only two local ones. And I, I guess I'm a supporter of bi-local. The attorneys we've been using, you know, have done a great job for many years. And, and they even live in town. Well, a lot of them live in our town. So, I mean, if I was going to make a motion on this, I know we're going to look at this, but I would say we should just stay with the current attorneys that we have a, a long reputation with. They've been very responsive to us over a long period of time. They're local and so, but, you know, I, we could go through this process, you know. I don't know if my opinion is going to change much, though.
Tom, just so you know, several of our committees, I can think of the planning board and maybe even the conservation commission, they use attorneys other than these, the two, our town council and our labor council.
Okay.
Isn't that correct?
They don't use labor council.
No, no, they use attorneys other than those firms.
They have to use other coun, but most, quite frequently, they use other firms, yes.
Right. So, so, you know, when we say town council, that's kind of our general stuff. But planning board, they have a separate attorney, as far as I know.
Not always. They don't, I'm not aware of them having a separate agreement. I think that would need to be included in the legal budget. I haven't seen a contract for it. But occasionally, we, this last example of the zone change, we tried desperately to find a firm that could provide legal opinion that didn't have a conflict.
And that was the problem. They could have used our town council, but he was conflicted out.
So you looking for a motion to settle Lynn and the department heads at desk?
Yes.
So moved.
You want a second? I'll second. All right. Any further discussion on that?
Is there a time expectation, Lynn?
It's going to be quick. I'll probably bring you back a recommendation June fifth because this is for July first. So we need time, if, if there is a change, we would need as much time as possible.
Okay. All those in favor? All right, thank you, Lynn, good luck. Next up, we have a letter that we received. Mike, you received this, right, or did it come in the mail?
I'm sorry, what topic are we on?
The COLA introduction.
Oh, yes.
Hampton County Regional Retirement Board, five percent local COLA option.
Yes, this was sent, I'm sorry.
This, no, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're good.
This was an email that the executive director of the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board sent to town clerks. And there was a delay in our office receiving it.
Okay. Did we have a town clerk then?
We did.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Mark.
So because this involves the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board, I don't know, Lynn, have you been on the emails this afternoon that have been burning up the email chain?
I have not.
Between people talking about the Hampton County Retirement Board and, and issues? Because apparently, and I'm saying apparently because I have not independently verified these. But I will comment that the, the notes came from Bob Markle, who's the town manager at Hampton, Don Davenport, who's the chair of their select board, and a couple of other people, of concerns and issues with the whole memo. That there are things in there that aren't correct. There are things that people need to understand. And I'll give you four examples. For example, the, the memo says that the governor signed a, an option that, that increases cost of living five percent. Fact is, the governor's option was a three percent. And then there was a supplemental budget proposal for two percent. So they weren't consecu, they weren't in one unit. They were separately, that the governor's proposal was mostly to cover teachers and other people primarily because, and I think this is an important point to make, that there's a minimum level of pensions for teachers. That minimum level is $13,000. So that, you know, a teacher who's got a pension of $13,000 is getting three percent, that's $390. If you bump that to five percent, it may be meaningful because it's $650. But the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board doesn't buy into that $13,000 minimum pension. They've set their pension minimum at $18,000, which is much larger than, than the state. And so even though the state was focusing on, on, primarily on teachers, the letter here affects everybody. The other comment is that the, the letter indicated that, don't worry, there's no changes based on the additional $5.5 million that this will cost the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. It'll cost them $5.5 million a year, every year going forward, plus compounds. But more importantly, if you actually read the letter from, from the folks who, you know, it was attached to the original document, and I'm going to try to pull that up.
Siegel?
Siegel, right, thank you. It says that, you know, we can only increase by, we can only add, we can only assess you an eight percent increase for a certain number of years. And after that, it will go down a little bit. But it won't go down, and this is my words, not theirs, certainly won't go down as far as it would have without this additional $5.5 million. But they did not indicate that, although Siegel's comment did say that it will not, it will go down below eight percent. Whereas the implication of the letter was it won't affect the eight, 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 three and a half. So, you know, i- if anybody thinks that you're going to pay out more money and not get an added cost to the towns, you know, got a Brooklyn Bridge to sell you, I think, because it's, it's going to cost more money. Having said all this stuff, you know, it, it's hard to begrudge people the, the cost of living increase. It's a very, you know, it's, it's, it's trying times. I mean, people are, you know, who are on a pension are, are locked into a three percent increase. The problem is, this isn't a one-time increase, if you read it. This is, authorizes the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board to do this forever and, you know, potentially. And they have been wanting to do, you know, been want to or have been known to do this kind of stuff forever primarily because the members of the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board, board are all pensioners themselves. So they're not removed from this, and they fall into the category, well, if everybody's conflicted, then you can still vote, which is, which is what they do. So they're voting themselves the added increase. And once they have this authorization, it'll, it, it could go on, you know, beyond just this, this one year. And that's, that's my biggest concern, is that the letter was a little bit misleading, that the, the, you know, the implication was, don't worry, it won't cost the towns anymore. But it's going to have to. And they, they haven't got a balance, processed a balanced budget, haven't had one for time. They, they continued in each of the last five years, when they do their, their financial actuarial report, the date when their balance gets moved out another year or two. And so, you know, they're just not fiscally responsible, in, in my opinion. So I don't, I don't know how to address this. I think people can understand. It's part of my bone to pick with the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board that the management is terrible. On the other hand, we're talking about real people who get real money. But, you know, they've already set their minimum at $18,000 rather than the state's $13,000, which was the premise by which this entire additional two percent was made. It was made to address the lowest pensioners. So, you know, I don't know where to go with this. I mean, if it was up to me, I'd, I'd approve it with a couple of conditions and let the Hampton County Retirement Board either obey the conditions, get other approvals that are blanketed, or get other towns to agree the conditions, and use this as a means of bringing them in line.
I, I was hoping you had a lot to say about this. I'm glad you did. Have the other towns listed here, is that, is that correct? That Springfield, Chickaby, East Hampton? I'm just curious if, if other towns are?
They have, they have accepted a local supplemental COLA, but they use a different basis. They're down at that $13,000 basis. They also run their own teachers and firefight. I mean, Chick, Springfield's not part of Hampton County. Chickaby's not part of Hampton County. They, they have their own, and believe me, Springfield's even, you know, of the, of the 50 worst, lowest pension plans in the Commonwealth, Springfield is number 50, Hampton County's 49. So Springfield has nothing to write home about necessarily.
But if this is legislated by, and the governor signed this, we, do we have any choice?
Yes, it is an option, is a local option to add an additional two percent. You know, the three percent was, is, and oh, by the way, I should also mention that Governor Healy is not giving three, five percent. She's sticking to three percent for her, in her process. So this was done by outgoing Governor Bill Weld.
Baker.
Baker, I'm sorry. Baker.
Hopefully he won't undo.
Yeah, you know, this is, but, but Governor Healy is, is sticking to three percent.
You do have some time, you don't have to decide tonight.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, Mark, do you want to propose some restrictions on the?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I don't, I don't even know where to go, to tell you the truth. I mean, the answer is, I'd be glad to do that. And I'm sure I can come up with something, and I'm not sure it'll, it'll even be meaningful. Like I said, I, you know, I, I'm really reluctant to tell retirees that are making, you know, $18,000 as a pension, you know, you can't have the extra 360 bucks, which is what it is per person. It's not a lot of money. But collectively, it's five and a half million dollars to an organization that has shown that they cannot and have not controlled their, their finances.
Yeah, that's, that's the awful thing about this. I, I hate to begrudge anyone a modest increase when gas is $3.30 a gallon. But we hear almost every week about the misdeeds of the, the board. But we have to give them money to give to the pension.
I mean, certainly, this would be, remember, this is be retroactive to last July first, July first, 2022. I mean, if we did this, we should certainly only do it for one year and not for multiple years. But again, Governor Healy is budgeting a three percent COLA in the budget that she submitted for fiscal year 2024.
Why do you think they don't mention that?
Because it's not to their advantage to mention it.
He's, he's saying, oh, you know, high interest, you know, that, that are inflation rates are, you know, higher than ever and all this stuff.
And, and he's right, all that, all that is true. All that is absolutely true, you know. But, but again, the, for me, one of the things is that, that, you know, if somebody earned a pension of $14,000 through their work in the Hampton County, they're getting an $18,000 pension because that was set as the minimum in this, in this agency. Why? I have my reasons and I, they're, they're all speculative, so I won't say. But, but the point is, you know, it obviously goes to, there were a lot of people who were friendly to some of the people on the board who were in that 13 to $18,000 range, and they boosted them all up to $18,000 because it made for good personal politics. But now, so these people who really only earned a pension of maybe three percent on $14,000 are already getting three percent on $18,000. Now we're going to give them five percent on $18,000? You know, the problem is, you know, that's not everybody. You know, there, there are people who've earned 18, 20, $30,000 pensions, you know, and for them, this isn't an issue. It's that small group of people. And by the way, because of the way it's done, we don't know how many are in that pool. But it's, looks like a substantial number based on categories.
Well, anyone? Well, anyone who is in that pool is, those are poverty-level wages. You know, you can't live on $18,000 a year.
But, but Tom, I, 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 I'm not going to argue with you, that's absolutely true, but we don't know the circumstances under which those people earn that pension. Some of them worked for 10 years and left and got another job, because they just wanted enough to get their minimum pension. And they got the $13,000 pension, but now it's an $18,000 pension, and they're out, we, we don't know any of that. So I'm not going to make an assumption that, yes, those people are living on a $13,000 salary, woe is them, and how dare I stop them from making more money? Because I can't make, there, there may very well be people like that, and so I'm not going to say there aren't, but.
So for our town, do we need to look at the distribution of pensions?
We can't, we don't have that data.
We don't have that data.
It's all buried in the.
And it won't matter, the vote that you take is the vote for, that gets.
All pensions, doesn't matter.
I mean, your, your vote doesn't do it, but collectively, the vote of all of the cities and towns that are part of it.
Yeah, has Paul incorporated this in the long-term projections?
All, all he's projected is that our retirement fees or, or assessments will be going up 8% per year for the next five or six years. I mean, that's what they've said, and then they don't go beyond that, you know, so, and, and the only reason it's only, only 8% is because that's the maximum added they can assess us every year, by law. Because it still already pushes out to, what do they say, 2035?
2036.
2036, and them making the number, and if they increase this, it's going to be worse than that. So Tom, I, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to short, you know, people who need the money, and, and the, the issue is, is the agency is not an effective manager of, of funds, and the fact that they've already, like I said, they've already moved that, that bottom percentage up. Now, if they took that back to a minimum of $13,000, you know, that then compensates for this kind of thing, but, I don't know.
Yeah, no, good points, Mark, I, you know, it's worth considering.
I don't know how you want to.
Yeah, I, I think, I hate to put it on you, but I would like to hear what you, what you think.
You've heard, you've heard all I know right now.
If you think you can put together some reasonable restrictions that we can put on.
Well, I, I, you know, I mean, we're not going to vote tonight, but certainly, you know, I, I, you know, can we ask them to go back to the $13,000 minimum? Sure we can, can we make this?
Are they going to do it?
No, can we make this effective for one year only? We certainly can and ought to do that, for one, I mean, if the governor is putting a 3% COLA in their pension for fiscal 2024, why would we approve anything other than that? Now, those are the two things I can think of off the top. I don't know, Lynn, I, I don't know if you've even had a chance to look at this, what's been going on today, but.
Um, when this, when we received, there was a notice, um, I want to say it was from MMA, maybe in August, about this passing. There was a brief conversation that Paul and I had at that time, and we were taking a wait-and-see approach to see if Hampton County was going to present this. When this came in, I was surprised, because I had forgotten that that happened in August. So I don't know why it took them so long, um, I, so I'll have to go back and talk with Paul and see if there's any other thoughts, and I can share them with you, you know, in advance of the next meeting, Mark, as you prepare something.
Sure.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, Baker's authorization was for state employee, state retirees and teachers' plan, not for anybody else, then.
Lynn, do, do we have a number of how many individuals this affects who retired from the town? Like, do we know the exact number of living employees who are receiving this pension?
I don't believe we would have that number. We would be able to figure out, no.
They don't, they don't split it out by town, Tom.
Oh, I see.
They, we get, we get, actually, we get assessed based on the total number of employees plus retirees, and not sep, not separated. But it doesn't matter, I mean, we're getting assessed at 8%, because that's the ma, that's the maximum they can raise it, and that's what they, they need every bit of that. Anyway, thank you for your indulgence.
Well, no, I appreciate your, I was hoping we would get something like that. Um, all right, so that's, let's table that till next time, uh, and then we have Select, I'm sorry, the Town Manager Annual Evaluation.
Yeah, so this is, I just, I just put a memo on to the agenda, just letting everyone know if they could submit the evaluation form to me by, I believe I put May 31st on there?
Yep.
Okay, um, I will send out, there's an example of the form online, but you probably cannot download this one to make it PDF fillable, so I'll send you all a copy, along with an updated goal spreadsheet. Um, and then if you could send me back the evaluations by May 31st, we could then compile them and discuss at our June 5th meeting.
The one on the agenda is fillable.
Yeah.
It does allow, okay, so you could just download that, if you want, I could send it to you.
Yeah, it just says, send it to the Chair, or you can send it to Mike or me, I'll pass it on, it does, it doesn't matter.
So May 31st?
Yes.
Hey, Mike, could you just send out some ticklers?
Yeah.
As we get up there? Not, not saying I'll need it, but you never know. All right, finally, tonight, we have a memo to Select Board on the summer meeting schedule. Mike, I'll let you be the hero here.
Yes, um, Lynn, if you feel free to cut me off at any point. Um, so, um, for the summer, A15 is going to be offline. They're replacing the air handlers, and they're starting right above, uh, this room. We've been advised that it would be best if we probably did not meet in here for the summer, um, because of the increase in temperature. Um, with that being said, we, I put in a modified meeting schedule, if I can download it and pull it up. I believe we, I wrote down that we would consolidate two of the meetings, I'm just pulling it up now so that I could, um, read for beta. So June 5th, we would meet normally as scheduled in A15, then we would have our annual election, where then we would reorganize the Thursday after the, the election, if everyone's available on that June 15th date. We could do a quick reorganization meeting that Thursday. Then instead of meeting on July 3rd, I believe it is, um, is that Monday? Yeah, because July 4th is a Tuesday.
And instead of June 20th.
Instead of June 20th.
Which we couldn't do, go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's okay, I'm trying to backtrack to see why I did this. So June 20th, school committee meets in this room, June 19th is a national holiday. We would have to meet that Wednesday, June 21st anyway. So consolidating the July 3rd meeting with the June 20th meeting to make it a June 26th meeting made the most sense to me. Um, and then we would have to meet hybrid at a location to be, to be determined. Um, I believe LCTV can stream into the Zoom, and it could still be broadcasted similarly to how they did it during the pandemic, when we met just virtually. So we would still be able to offer an in-person option, whether that's at the Adult Center or somewhere else, and have it be now, um, livestream on LCTV's channels as well, on the PEGOX's channels.
And then just the last two bullets on there were, um, a recommendation for a one meeting a month in the summer in recognition of summer schedules and just a lighter workload, um, and giving staff a little bit of time to catch up on some projects.
Well, thank you, yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Well, I, I don't want to be the Grinch, but I, I, I think we ought to meet more than once during the month in July and August, primarily because I'd like to see us put together a, a more formal plan of goals and objectives, and we never seem to get around to that. In fact, most of the time, the Select Board is reactive, and it's always usually at the summer when there's a lull, that we get a chance to be a little bit proactive, if I can use, use that word on, on the things that we're looking to do strategically, rather than just reacting to what's coming at the, at the Select Board. And I'm not saying that we have tons and tons of things to do every, every, every meeting, but, you know, we have not had a good formal goal-setting session in at least a couple of years. We're just kind of working off of a list that Lynn keeps adding to and taking off of, and it, 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 it works to some degree, but we haven't had the kind of discussions that we might have otherwise had. And I, I don't know how to better state that, but I think that, you know, we're talking about, we, we only meet 24 times a year, by schedule, we meet more than that. Oftentimes, taking two of them out is, you know, like 8% or 10% of the, the meetings. And I think it's, it, it's an opportunity I wouldn't want to give up.
Yeah, I don't disagree on setting goals, but I think we, to me, we can do that at those meetings. Uh, I've been to summer meetings that were here for 50 minutes, and, uh, if we, if any of that business, and we can always call more another meeting if we need to, but, uh, if that 50 minutes, if it's a two-and-a-half-hour meeting where we have a good goal-setting session, uh, that's great to me. But I, I don't, I, I haven't been on board that long, but the summer meetings are, I think, are good candidates for consolidation. I mean, the other option is to schedule the meetings and then cancel them, but I think it's easier, if, if there's nothing pressing. But I think it's easier to plan, and for staff too, not just for us, to have specific dates.
I, I, I can certainly, um, understand what Mark is suggesting, um, but I, I tend to agree more with Josh. I think we can, um, leverage these meetings in the summer months to focus more on, on the goals. Um, as Josh mentioned, it is a little bit lighter in the summer months, so, um, I'm okay with how it's presented to the, the Board in terms of the calendar.
I guess I'd just say that generally, the more time you give a task, the more time it takes. So, um, you know, if we meet once a month, I think we would get, just definitely more efficient than if we meet twice a month, so I would support one meeting.
Yeah, and I think, you know, especially this summer with the air handler and this room not even being available, I don't think, you know, it would hurt for us to try this, you know, and see if this is, you know, um, if this, if this does make more sense, you know. Um, and if it doesn't, then we can always, you know, revert back.
Uh, have we checked with LCTV on, uh, just to confirm they still have that capability? And have we worked?
Yep, everybody's out there, I'm just waiting to hear back on everything else, so we can adjust accordingly. Um, and I will mention, it, it does seem like it's really only the August meeting that's getting consolidated because of the reorg meeting in June, and that June 26th meeting really just coming from July 3rd. We're only really missing one, one meeting, because you could restructure that reorg meeting if other business comes up, you could add more stuff to that as well. The goals might be ready for July or late June anyway, so, um, that's totally up to everyone.
And you could decide at that July 17th meeting that you have more business than you try to establish in a second August meeting.
Um, and we'll, we'll have some locations identified, the Adult Center is one of them.
Okay.
And we'll think of some others for the summer.
And hybrid is always an option for, for folks.
When this is, this is hybrid, so it's, we're meeting hybrid now, I mean, so it's not fully remote, it's really.
Yep.
I mean, we've got all kinds of places.
Yep, exactly, so go anywhere.
All right.
And we don't, you don't necessarily need to, need to vote on this tonight, at the next meeting, um, I plan to bring back a full calendar for all of FY24 anyway, so you can make modifications or do anything as you wish, then.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion, we accept, or we implement the schedule, summer schedule as presented in the May 15th memo from Mike Barbieri.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, thank you, and anything on the correspondence? Okay, and, uh, anybody like to move to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, adjourn.
Second? All those in favor? Thank you, good night, everybody.